We're gonna ask Dan McCrory to come up and give us an update on exactly what's going on between the city of Fairhope and the county and these right of ways and what I'm reading in the paper. Just fill us in, Dan, on the city's side of the story, if you will.
All right. Council members, on May the 6th of 2015, myself and Mr. Rome received an email from the county that they intended to do some drainage projects. Within this email, after they sent this to us, they said, "You only have six weeks to get them done." And it says, "These are county relocation projects. There will not be any relocation reimbursements." Sometime right after this, we approached the former mayor and addressed this issue with the former mayor. The former mayor advised us at this point that the city was not moving any utilities. Well, armed with that information, myself and Mr. Rome advised the, who is now the county interim engineer, of the information that the former mayor had told us that we were not moving them. Now, at this point, when the mayor tells me no, no means no, and I don't question him, neither would I question our current mayor about that. If she said no, that's it. It's no. At this point, the politicians can work those issues out, but obviously, at this point, that didn't happen because subsequent emails came afterwards, on the 7th of May, same thing, county relocation projects, there will not be any relocation reimbursements.
And that was 2015?
That's correct. On the 12th of May, another one came, same thing, these are county relocation, so there will not be any relocation reimbursements. Well, then on 28th of May, they slipped up and sent one that said it's a FEMA. So now we know that there was FEMA money involved, so there has to be some type of relocation reimbursement in here, but their email still, once again, said this was not reimbursable. Now, on the 17th of June, this is still going along, we're still participating with the county, because we don't want to hold any of this stuff up with the county, because we knew at some point, the politicians were liable to get together, talk, and we wanted to be proactive and be still ahead of this game. So, I had already sent my assistant, Mr. Jay Whitman, who's in the audience tonight, out. He was locating these different utilities for the county, and we emailed these to the county on June 17th, on 2015, at 3:43 in the afternoon, of whether they may or may not be in conflict with their projects that they had sent us. As we move forward in time, the first set of drawings that we got, that were in this area that were pertaining to us, we got on the 13th of July, and those drawings, they had had out for already a month, because they were dated June 15th. We didn't get them until July. So we're behind here already. But there again, when they sent this, they said, "We only had six weeks to move them." Well, how in the Lord can you move and get this kind of stuff together in six weeks? One of their later emails says, "Well, they've moved it out, you now have eight weeks." We got an email on July 13th, says, "Well, now you, they've moved it, you now have eight weeks." At this point, the former mayor still said no, because their emails are still telling us that these were not reimbursable. But bear in mind, this is our ratepayers' money. It's not my money, it's not our money, it's the ratepayers' money, and we need to be due diligence and look out for our ratepayers. So, at this point, there's subsequent other emails that have come along. They sent us coordinates, because their coordination system they had was hard to tell where they were doing it, so they sent coordinates with addresses, different things on those. Couple emails, they, apparently, they, we sent them, they, we don't know what they did with it, because one, a county employee would call, said, "Where's that?" We said, "We've sent that to a particular county employee," and I don't want to name names, because I'm not here to throw anybody under the bus. This go, these emails go back and forth all the way through, oh, let's see, up until, well, up until here recently, when Mr. Peterson became our operations director, we finally got something, actually in writing, that said it's reimbursable, almost two years later.
You know about what date that was, Dan?
Let's see, April, I would say, around April, right after Mr. Peterson came, became the operations director. There was another email that came out, May the 9th of 2017, that says, "Are you fully aware?" And all of y'all got that. I think, oh, the individual that sent this was fully aware of the county's, of the city's position at that time, too. Now, whether or not he communicated that to his bosses, the county commissioners, I don't know. I mean, I'm an intelligent person, but I can't speak to the communications habits of those individuals and our former mayor. I don't know what they were. So, as far as what came out, I want to touch, because there was two things, two commissioners that pointed out that, one, this was the city's fault, and mine, and I think this individual, in my opinion, is lost, is a ball in high weeds, as in his fault it is. I think the communication problem lies with the county by not including the city when they first started this project. Because I questioned one of them, "Why didn't you call the city and get us into a room?" Because there's not like nine or 10 water providers in Bowen County, we could sit down and try to iron these out and get all these details worked out, when the answer was, "Well, we just didn't do it." Well, here we are, because we just didn't do it. There was a lot of coordination effort that went on during the roundabout, a lot of meetings, a lot of, "Why couldn't we have had the same dialogue then?" Or, they could have picked up the phone once they were notified, the city's position, and let the politicians work that. We know, we know, that they know our telephone number, it's blasted on a sign out there on 32, you know, the city halls number and the warehouse number. So we know they know how to, what our phone number is. That's kind of, you know, it in a nutshell as to what's happened over the last, what, almost two years now. But now that we've stood firm on tonight's agenda, you do have where the, finally, utility reimbursement for each one of those sites. I did make another phone call to another utility that I know, and they didn't get reimbursed. Why, I didn't go into any great detail with that individual, this, I guess the squeaky wheel here is getting old, or we just stood our ground to protect our ratepayers, our customers. And I feel like that's what we did, and we did a good thing by doing that. Because these prices came in between $35,000 and $70,000. We've been working on, my assistant, Jay Whitman, has worked, has very, very hard in trying to keep the costs down to a very minimum to make it work, and he's done a tremendous job.
Dan, they wanted this done two years ago. How much has it been, the project's been delayed by this agreement not having been signed?
Well, we didn't tell them to go dig County Route 32 up and dig that hole across the road to stop and redo all that, when they knew there was a line in the way. Now, that's not my line, I'll let Mr. Rome speak, because that's a gas line. It has not stopped the project, it's delayed some of the individual things that they need in, but, you know, the bridge they cut, they shut down on 32, a week before school started, was not forward-thinking on this thing, and the bridge is done. There is no, there is no delay on the water sewer, I think there may be on the gas over there, is that on there? And it has to do with where the lines are actually set, with the flow line of the water that's coming into those drain culverts. They have to be lowered, because they actually would be in with the water flowing. It seemed like to me that when they hired the engineers, and we gave them all of the information, and that's documented, when we sent this to them, they were taking that into consideration when they were on their design, but for whatever reason it wasn't.
Well, we're gonna get them moved, and we're gonna be reimbursed about 35, roughly $35,000. How long will it take the work to take place?
It's approved tonight, we're gonna do the first one in the morning, and Jay, are you here still?
Yeah.
By next Friday, we'll have three.
By next Friday, if the weather permits, we have all the three, three six-inch lines done, and the order of parts for the eight-inch line, the board replaced, followed following the week, and then the 10-inch line, we're gonna have to coordinate with the county, because they have to do a lot of work before they move the 10-inch line. There's a drain box in the way, and we have to be on the opposite side of the drain box, the drain box has to be moved, the shoulder road has to be done. We can get out of the way, but we can't complete it until they can get close to completing the rest.
And then there's a fifth?
Those are the five. Three, three six inches will be done by next Friday, or any weather delays. An eight-inch will be done, and then the 10-inch will be, they have hours.
Y'all have any questions?
Mayor Wilson, I'm sorry, you're having to, having to deal with this issue, but, you know, I assure you, we were looking out for our customers and our ratepayers, because that's what, I feel like is one of our jobs that we need to be doing, is, because that's their money. Robert, anything you want to add?
Not like we didn't sit on our hands and do anything. I moved one, two, and three gas lines, new cord. The one on 32, like Dan said, they opened the hole up, no one did well, it was there. Worked out there two months, called me to come out and say, "Well, we realize it's in the way now." And I said, "Then it's gonna be five or six weeks before I can get anything done." As of today, everything's done, but the line's stopped. The mains moved, and all the weldings done, air test is on it. The other one on 32, east of 13, we're gonna go in there and just dig it back and lower it ourselves, missing their flow line by about two, three inches and all. There again, they knew about it. I informed their contractor that was working there at the time, "If you'll dig it back, I'll have someone come out here, we'll lower it, cover it up and go on." Well, apparently, he didn't feel comfortable digging around it, but they never told me that, so it didn't get done.
How, how long will it be below the flow now, when you relocate?
We gotta get it, they say the riff raft is gonna be two foot below the flow, so we're gonna try to get it at least three foot. So the thing is, that, you know, I don't find the pipe in the flow, but I want the riff raft on. And that was one of the things they said, "Well, what if we put a casing around it?" I said, "That's fine." No, they didn't do that either. So like I said, it wasn't a fact we'd be interested to do anything. We worked to the best of our ability, with our hands tied as far as five inches.
And did the gas line work for free?
We did.
Okay. Got any questions?
Thanks for the clarification.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, if you come, come forward if you will. Yeah, sure.
I forgot to ask this. Okay, so when they moved the road back off of 32, the bypass road now, there's a water line.
Talking about just east of 181?
Right. There's a water line there, and we have looked at it about 10 dozen times, I've been dancing with that, too, and they think it's not in the way. If it's gonna be in the way, and we, I mean, should you, could you authorize the statistical ahead and take care of it now, and then we'll worry about it later, or how, how do you want to handle that? Because I don't want to, I mean, I'm sick to death of looking at our name, and we're up on that side, and then they'll do it again. I think it's unprofessional and immature, at least. But anyway, what would you like us to do if we run into that? Because there's two projects, the one that he's talking about, lowering that gas line, we have a water line there, that they've said is not in the way, but obviously, they've made some miscalculations, because now we're having to do some of this work. So what, so what should we do about 32, if it turns out it's in the way at the last minute, and they start raising their hand?
So you could do, move a gas line and a water line at the same time?
No. What I was told is, the reimbursement monies for the particular project, they can only go 20% over what the actual amount is for that project, because I had asked them about using reimbursement money for the other project on 32, to go ahead and direction the board and new line, just like we're doing now, east of 181. And that's when they advised me that we can only do a 20% over, because that's only like 37,000 dollars, because of our cost. You would have to go all the way back through, getting it approved, getting the contractor, and all that.
So what's?
Delay in it even further. So that's something, you know, you're gonna have to think about on cost.
Yeah, what is, what is the approximate cost of that additional work?
It'd be very close to what it costs. Do you have the, I don't have it.
I don't have it.
There's an eight-inch line, it'd be another eight-inch line, and you would be looking at about...
I may have it here.
Probably about $8,000.
About $8,000. And a huge inconvenience, because we will be talking about water. Keep in mind that when we lower this water line, I'll have to have enough time to disinfect the line, which is usually about a three-day process, on the top of our hands. So we build the line, we disinfect the line, build the line in one day, disinfect the line for two days, we start on the fourth day, for instance. And then depends on who deals.
Jay, is this it, for the eight-inch?
That's it, yeah.
That's the one that's about $8,000, right?
Is that it?
Yes.
That'll be, that'll be very close.
Seven and 82, yeah.
If that is the case, I mean, and, Robert's right, we've already moved a couple water lines. I mean, they broke that one out on Otterburg, and, you know, we ate all kinds of overtime, and all kinds of problems with that, had people out of work very well on that. We're getting reimbursement for that. So it's not like we haven't done any...
They don't put that on the...
Yeah, they didn't put that on the...
Right.
They should go off the killing.
Well, what we can do, council, if y'all, if you want, toss it around a little bit, but if you want to just, you know, appropriate some more money to have our crew do the additional work, if necessary.
And I will tell you, as we've asked that question, Mr. Peterson, that was what, when you asked that question on 32 about the big cut, did you ever get an answer back on that?
The water line?
Not on the 181.
Yeah, so that was, what, about eight weeks ago? Six weeks ago, we made that request? Something, was that close?
I just don't want us to get beat up.
Maybe we can, maybe we can also just throw in a little bit more money for a more permanent sign around the roundabout after the gas station opens for those delays, and maybe even get a twofer for the next roundabout that's gonna be built, that also has unzoned land, that could potentially need that sign, so.
It was unprofessional.
Would you write up a little bit of language while we're in this work session, so if we need to amend this resolution, that's item 12, or we might want to put it as an additional, what do you think, Clark?
I'd do a separate item.
A separate item. You might want to get with, I see Tut here, get with Tut and Marcus, and have, probably Tut, and have him draft a quick resolution on that. And if you're talking about $8,000, I'd say not to exceed $10,000, probably.
If we don't exceed $10,000, we're not gonna exceed the $10,000.
That's almost a third of what the total cost of what we're getting reimbursed for all the other work is.
Well, it's, it'd be a bigger job. If you're looking at eight-inch pipe, it'd be probably a little bit like $250,000 to get it lowered.
Should we be asking the county to reimburse us for that, too?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Absolutely, because we've asked, I mean, on this one, we've asked, I know that Dan's asked, I've asked, three or four times. I've bet with every one of the construction people, every construction, everyone else on every one of these jobs.
And it's at the same time, you know, you start nickel and diming, you know, the county, I don't know.
It's up to you, that's why I'm asking, what we do.
Counsel, any comments?
We're certainly gonna put it in there, so we don't have to come back and get any additional delays.
Get written up about being delayed?
Delay on the other line?
I think so.
Okay. Well, let's make it a separate resolution, if you'll get, Tut over here, keeps seeing Marcus there, and Tut here, so, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we'll go back there. Mayor, thank you very much, I appreciate the chance to kind of clear this up, and council, thank y'all very much, so.
All right. Thanks, Dan. Counsel, I wanted to tell you all, before we get to committee updates, that I, I still am trying to find two hours to finish up that infrastructure plan that I had been working on. I can get Richard up here.
Yeah, Sherri Lee, too. Dump up those greenest.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Mr. Peters, can we, can we get you to come up to the table? Sherri Lee, are you in here?
She's behind Marcus, back there.
Where is she? Can we get you up here, too, Sherri Lee?
Is there another, is there another chair?
Yeah.
So, Richard, I've been promising you that infrastructure study, that financial thing I've been putting together, and I'm, I'm promising you I'm two hours away from being done with it, I just can't seem to find two hours right now. But, Robert, I believe, had mentioned to me that Sherri Lee had also mentioned grant monies, so that's why I want to bring her up here as well. What I, what I want to know is, I don't want you to think that we're stalling this work, so I want to know if you know what you need right now. I think my, my own personal priority, and I think the council would probably agree, is the, is the substation work. Would you agree that's the most pressing of any, especially with summer coming up? And I know that you already, you've been working on some contingencies, but if we need to get transformers ordered, and you have to have money to put down, let us know what you need, in terms of...
I'm looking forward to the next budget cycle, to be more specific.
Right, but if we're gonna have to get these, I think you said it takes about a year to get these, right? So if we ordered them now, it would be next spring, which would be with another...
Whole 'nother budget cycle.
Well, a whole 'nother budget cycle, and I was thinking, another summer with more load on it, because we're gonna have more load. Whatever we got now, we're gonna have more next year. Because everybody goes out and buys LED bulbs and cuts down on the demand, but I don't think that's gonna do it. So, I guess, just, so we're not here, like Dan was having to defend the city, because there were some communication issues, tell us what it is, if you know now, or just, what do you think you need and when?
Well, we need to get the contractor steward engineer to start working on the line. And we need to go ahead and order the first, and we got the two transformers at Twin Deep that are the higher voltage transformers, and we got the two transformers that go, one at Fairhope Avenue and one at, that will be the combined Nichols-Churk Street substation that we're looking for the site either right across, it's pretty prominent, the good ear has, or the site on Midland, where that property is more of a flatter, and the construction of that substation site at that location would be a little less expensive. But I contacted that property owner, and what I will need to do is get an appraisal for that property, and this guy lives, and he, there's two properties, and one is at back there, and one is Omaha, Nebraska, and one is St. Church.
Tell us again why we need to buy land. Do we need a larger site, or do you need something more?
Well, the site we have now, you can't take that substation out and feed all the load while the construction is taking place. That's the biggest problem for the Lant station. We can't do anything with the Lant until we upgrade the Fairhope substation and the Nichols substation, because those are the two substations that are on feet while it's out of service. And once you start working with substations, right, you're not going to be able to provide power through that location, you gotta provide power from other locations. And right now, there's no place to do that, because the Fairhope and the Lant, and the Nichols and the Church are, have load that, that they can't accept anymore efficiently. That's why we gotta rebuild it first. The Nichols substation, which is at Nichols Young, it, it's gonna be rebuilt with, with big capacity, so that the Church Street substation can be abandoned, because it's gonna be a bigger capacity, and because it's gonna be replacing the facility that's currently needed to provide.
We're going to completely, you're thinking to completely abandon the Church Street location?
Yes. That's what we're trying to do. And the model should be finished, I got them back with Langschild showing us all the different scenarios that we may be looking at for, you know, with, with the several power transformers coming in for the Lant, we feel pretty good about that section, but we still a little bit, you know, concerned with the Fairhope Avenue, and, I mean, you know, we just want to be prepared for the scenarios that we can imagine that may occur, you know, worst-case scenario, big lake, equipment at the age, we're not able to sustain, pick loads, we don't want to do anything.
So, you know...
We need to get the steward engineer...
So the mayor has to select them?
And that goes back to working with Dan Ames, and feeling like that the policy within the city is, we need to request proposal qualifications, we qualify firms that are on our list, and then we have to select one that responds to that request of qualification, and then we ask that provider to be allowed to negotiate with that selected one.
Yeah, that's why, I guess, that's what I was...
And the only issue with that is, I don't think that's really probably the state law requirement as much as it is our own policy, and when the state law says you need to look for qualified firm based on your policy, I think that's what Dan and I read in the state law, and our policy is to request qualification packages from qualified firms that are on our list. And that's the only...
But do we not have to put something of this magnitude out for bid?
Professional services.
Just, okay, once they do the professional services, then we put that out for bid?
We, we can select, but we can't select a firm based on size, if it comes out of resonance or... You can't select a firm based on...
Right, but we can select them, but I'm talking about once, then whomever we select due to design, but then we could give the work to the lowest bidder, lowest qualified bidder.
Yeah, we'll bid the product to the lowest qualified contractor price. The contractor price will be to the lowest bidder.
Okay.
The professional service by state law has to be based on merit, not cost, and the professional engineers and land surveying board has stipulations in their rules and regulations that are state law, that you cannot select one, just as he said, we have to go out in an RFQ format based on merit, show us that you can perform the work better than these other guys, and then grade the RFQs, and then present them, you know, here's our recommendation to the mayor, the mayor says this when it comes forward to you guys, and you approve the negotiation of the fee, and then not to exceed, and then we get to talk money with them, and only then, and then we bring that back to you, and if you approve, then we, we go for the contract, we sign the contract. That is, that is the procedure, pretty much, give or take, by state law. We cannot go after them and say, as in other states, "Okay, you two guys, who, who, you know, this is the job, which one, what's your cost, what's your cost? Sold, can't do it."
That's too bad.
Yep. But, at the state, at the state level.
We're getting that consultant, getting contracts to do this work, this completely, we need to get that.
Okay. You had mentioned one time the possibility, and I know that when these firms put their name on the line, they don't want the city doing any work, because they think that they might be liable for something we did, but you had mentioned that some of this work, some of our crews might be able to do, on some of these upgrades. Didn't you mention that to me at one time? I mean, can we not, for instance, swap out a transformer?
Well, and I talked to...
Those things, I mean, that doesn't look that difficult.
And the biggest thing is that we have other issues to do with maintenance wise, you know, we're looking at poles that need to be replaced, we're looking at lines that need to be upgraded, and we're looking at having to take Christmas lights off of trees and having to put Christmas lights back on. And our time is just not a time where we can omit, with that work being under contract to a contractor, and not wanting to cause him to be delayed, because we can't respond to what he needs us to do that work, we wouldn't want to risk that.
Okay. Any questions?
What was, it was, Stewart did some kind of study last year, a couple years ago, didn't he? Something was included in the previous mayor's budget. It had, you know, electrical upgrades, what was that?
It was, it had to do with this, it was like...
Four to six KV lines, and I think that was part of it, and Joe...
He's hiding back there.
The four to six KV line that...
Come, come up here, guy, we can't, we can't talk like this, and we gotta have a little more order than this.
And part of that proposal, it would work on a four to six KV...
Right, the whole change outs, but under Plan A, that whole change out process is going to be washed, because those holes serve Church Street Substation, but Plan A, Church Street is going to be washed.
$460,000 cost eliminated.
There's the north split.
Right. Well, I just, I want to know what we need to get on order now, or we're gonna be talking about this later, and the parts aren't gonna be ordered, and they're not gonna be here until...
Next question is, does that land need to be procured before the study's done? I mean, if it's gonna be at different locations, does that matter?
No, sir, I doubt that that won't matter as much as getting a commitment for it. And then, I talked to the owner of that property, and then I talked to Lamps, the consultants I was with, and I was like, "We can continue to build on that site, even if we can't get the other line." And he says, "We can." So I think that's the thing, there's get an appraisal that we can take to the owner, and the owner, Massa Redd or something like that, y'all sent me a thing, a name like that, that's to the owner, and he's seen Fordham, willing to work with us on it. I said, "We'll just get an appraisal, and you can tell us what appraisal you'd like us to use." I said, we'll just get an appraisal, and you can tell us what appraisal you'd like us to use. If you're buying, and if he's in Arizona, I think, he's not that, you know, aware of appraisal by business. But then we may get two of them if we are, and we just get two appraisals and maybe have this higher than any. It would be hard.
Well, I'd like to see the number before I write a blank check, but, yeah, see what we're talking about.
Well, the appraisal in Riviera property, they had got the seven thousand. And it is, but, but in Riviera, in support of what they would do is Tom Del, the owner manager, suggested that we look at what additional cost would we incur on that site and make an offer that may offset, and possibly have to develop that site from the price.
Okay.
So I think that, I mean, and I'm sure they were.
Okay.
But if the engineer and everybody else thinks it's like a photo flash, that's where we're going.
Sharon Lee, what do you have in mind for grants?
So, um, I sent y'all an email, I think you're referring to, about financing for this. And one of the things I needed to know, and it was kinda Robert, you were saying, well, what is it? Send me a list of what it is that you've discovered, and then we can figure, you know, put it into the figures.
Right.
Um, but what I needed to know, it's kinda like putting the pieces of a puzzle together, is to understand what the priorities are, and then to match it to what's available. And I'll, let me just give you a couple of examples.
Yeah.
So, um, there are a couple of programs through, like USDA has something called a CF loan program um, with a, it's a direct, it's a direct fixed rate loan at three point three percent. Um, and it's something that doesn't go up, you're not penalized for paying it off. There's a forty five percent grant for water and waste disposal loan grant program. Uh, it can be combined with a two point seven five percent loan. Um, you can apply for state revolving loan fund. Um, there's through ADECA, there's a couple of infrastructure grant programs that are just straight grants. Um, there's also programs that are consistently running through EPA, USGBC. Um, there are a lot of different things out there. And what I wanted to know is what are our priorities? And as soon as I know what they are, I can piece together the opportunities, and then we can decide, do we wanna go after those opportunities? Um, do we wanna look into these loans? Are we gonna go the bond direction? Which, which way do we wanna go, and then what grant funds are available to complement that? So it's just, that's why in the email I said, let's see, what are the priorities first that, you know, mayor and council decide are most important for the city? And then we piece together what, what we're gonna go after to support them.
I think for the infrastructure, the electrical upgrades are, and if I had to take a stab, I don't know, get some feedback from the council on this, if we borrow money, I would, I would think it would be from a local source and not a bond issue. I think it'd be a local bank one. We've been getting them down below three percent right now.
Yeah, I was a little, I was interested in that rate. Um, they said with the bond, different, there are, um, different loan programs that can go up over the course of many years, and some you have to pay off earlier. But that this one remain steady for thirty years, and not knowing where the interest rates are gonna go, that this was, um, a sure thing. Um, but, you know, I also like.
The one for forty percent grant, you said forty percent, forty five percent?
Yeah, that is, that's water and waste, water. It's a, and that's a disposal grant program, so that's something else we can look into. But there are, there are many others, if we think that this is the priority.
USDA representative for following the hand or?
Well, and that's, that's who I've been meeting with, therefore.
Is it Steven?
What the issue, the line of the sewer might be obvious and aggression, I don't know. Potentially create overflow conditions.
And I think ADECA too, I think US, I think USDA and ADECA applying to both of those are the way to go for this. And I also think about stormwater, I mean, I don't know what's gonna come out of that study when we ultimately.
We've gotten all the lift station information together for the new study, and then we'll try to make it done sometime next week. So just some physical observation with the condition of these facilities, and that may.
They have completed their study? They have completed their study?
No, 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 we're just getting information.
Oh.
We gotta get them started on specific sites and evaluating capacities and conditions, physical, you know, maybe electrical, chemical conditions, and capacity moving down the drain. And everything we're doing for future capacity, we either have the lower capacity available or we're gonna change the mechanical feature unless we're gonna do it where we upgraded, where there may be, you know, black with the earth.
Do you have any questions?
I was just gonna say, I know we've talked about it before in kind of broad terms, and I think it would be good to drill down and get specific priority list, anticipated costs, and figure out how much money, you finish your analysis, how much money we need to borrow, because I prefer not to borrow much, but if we're gonna borrow money now, it's probably the time to, before rates tick up anymore.
Yeah.
The one from Steven for, is that annual, or is that, when's the deadline for that?
You're talking about the CF loan program? It's a rolling deadline. We're fine with that. But, I mean, I can certainly have him come in. But again, that's just one we, I mean, there's, we talked about land acquisition.
And that's for who?
Conservation, that's USDA.
And now, and they can loan money for electrical upgrades, or that would be?
No, that was water sewer.
Okay.
Uh, that's the grant program. They have a CF loan program that can also go for other upgrades, water sewer.
I know that they do conservation things for electric, but I don't know what they have available for electric.
But also the state has a conservation land program too. I heard someone say something about land acquisition. So, again, I just wanna understand all the different components, and then just go out for what we want to go after and see what we get.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Robert? Okay. I'll get you that study after we, or that plan, and I'll get it to everybody that we get. I think the only one I've sent it to is Robert, and he probably can't read it unless I'm explaining it to him, because there's just a whole bunch of numbers on page that are put together.
There's a couple of other things about, if I may, if I can, with rest of my.
Yep.
In the warehouse, we have Jeff, and I can't tell you his last name unfortunately, but I know he retires first day of September. And we have inventory, and we have an immune system, and we're trying to develop an inventory system with. And then he's gonna keep top one of that for us, Clint and Randy both work with him. But before he retire, and what I'm starting to gather from the way personnel issues work, you don't have an opening until there is an opening. And the opening will be presented to us until the guy retires, kind of like, well, we need two months of training. If we could advertise the position now and hire somebody by July first, at least he would have those two months to work, and just understand what's going on in the warehouse and not come to train without any knowledge of what's happening after the man knows all the information.
Right.
Is that, I think we need to.
Yeah, I'd like to find out a little bit more.
Counsel, I have put in in advance Jeff Jimenez termination warrant papers because he does retire on August thirty first. I think he's working on September first. And I have put in that, and I have put in a request to hire. So the warehouse comes under the purchasing department, and we are aware of those issues, and we're working on those issues.
Yeah, I see the issue. We don't necessarily wanna create another position when we know it's gonna be vacant, just to fill it for a short period of time, and then have to eliminate or something.
Succession plan, if you're gonna wait for somebody to leave before you try to request it. There may be some institutional knowledge.
Do it part-time?
And then, yeah.
Usually if you're gonna hire somebody, you have to have full comp status, clearly, where you, I just think that overlap, and we don't try to do this.
I think we can do that. We can fund a position.
Fund something for ninety days, you know, with understanding that it goes away as soon as the guy retires. We can do that.
Is that how that would work?
I wanna give it a little thought, but if that's what, if that's what we had to do, I don't know if that's how it would work.
But I don't, I don't, I'm not used to this kind of times, and I follow that. But the other issue I would like to bring up is that it seems to be in the, in the room, but there's two things actually. The two percent, there were some people that have been here maybe eight months or nine months, and they were a little bit disappointed that they didn't even get the pro right share of this percentage of the time they've been here.
Twelve months.
I just let you know.
We'll take the heat for that.
Okay. And then I understand too, to the, to the budget, that the position of supervisor of the electric department may not be funded going forward, is that a fair statement?
For the superintendent, we have to do a permit if you're gonna keep a superintendent and assistant for all utilities. But for now, we have an assistant.
Did him plus retire?
Yeah, well, his position is funded right now.
Right.
What happens after he's retired? Did I reach something without?
Uh, we didn't pass anything in the budget that was related to that at all. We hadn't had that discussion either, I mean.
The lack of position still a position in the organization, or is it?
Technically, yes.
And still, it'd be a valid position?
Technically, yes. But if mayor, mayor wants to talk to us about doing it another way, we'd be, we'd be willing to listen to that too. Okay.
I mean, and I don't mean to get into all of this, but it seems to create some uncertainty among some of the people that are trying to decide what's best for them too, you know, and it's difficult. I mean, it would be hard for me to think that, whether this job or something, that's gonna be there next year or the year after. It, it didn't matter to me anyway. I mean, I was retired when I got the job. I can do other stuff too. I can't hit it down, is what I'm like, I'm trying to, whether you can see that or not, I mean, I can't judge that, but I try to do the best I can.
Richard, I actually appreciate you coming and informing the council like this.
The people that depend on, they've got younger kids possibly, and they've got, you know, a career that they're trying to pursue can actually have other options too. But it's, the uncertainty, the uncertainty creates.
Is that speaking for himself, he's speaking for everybody?
The uncertainty does produce anxiety, and I mean, it's not, it's a good environment.
Well, as far as that electrical superintendent, I mean, we, when council mayor had even talked about that, I mean, it's funded, I.
It, it's actually not, after June.
Hadn't thought about it going away, or hadn't given it any thought.
The note I've seen in the spreadsheet would indicate that it's not funded after six months of two thousand.
That's correct. That is correct.
I'll have to look at that sheet. I'll look at that again. Okay, all right.
It's just difficult to know how to go somewhere if you're not sure what's available to you when you get there. I'm trying to step around anything, I just think.
I understand. I'll look at that. I'll look at that. I wanna look to go back, and I don't have any of that in front of me right now to speak to it, so I'll go back and look at that, what exactly was adopted.
And, you know, I appreciate Dan and Robert doing the summary on the timeline of all the. In my opinion, you know, it's, I won't look back anyway, it doesn't bother me as much as, is there anything we can learn from all this, and can we, that you don't have to make, have to react quicker? And one thing I think that, not tonight, but the procurement procedures we have, they get to be pretty difficult. And then I don't know if there's room to look at that.
We can look at them, uh.
Yeah, but I would say that we need to develop a little bit of trust and respect for each other at some point in time. And then I think we could feel good about the decisions we all make. I mean, I'm just.
Well, the bottom line is, is a lot of that is just, is just policy and procedures put in there for, for a reason. And I know that you don't particularly care for all the red tape, but I understand that. But I might also have to say very frankly, is some of it you're gonna have to live with. Because you, you know, now you're in municipal government, and it's not private business, and some of it's, you know, all in there for a reason.
I wasn't a private business, I was in the utility board.
But it wasn't government?
Yeah, it wasn't, because you're municipal.
Well, I know that Riviera is owned by Foley, but.
The utility board, the city board, it's public money, it's the same.
All right.
But it, it does make it difficult, just so.
I'm not gonna promise y'all that's gonna change right away.
I'm not asking you to promise me anything, I'm just telling you that.
Okay.
And, you know, as much as we have going on, to compound any issue with procurement or any other level of approval, it, it just builds to the list of things that you have priorities for. And it slows things down, not intentionally, but it just does. Now, if we were, if we were in a no growth period, if we were anywhere, we were waiting for the next thing to happen, and we had to, and we could afford that kind of time to do these kind of things, that'd be difficult. But we're in a fast-moving growth area that, that deserves attention on a daily basis.
Well, I think that you also, you haven't been in the position very long, and so as you get up to speed, you're gonna see things further down the road that can be brought forward and get the ball rolling sooner. And that's gonna not, you're not gonna always feel like you're behind the eight ball, like I feel like you feel right now at times. And so as, as you get more comfortable with the process, you're gonna know, well, I've gotta have that, I've gotta have that funded in three weeks. I need to get the paperwork going now, if I want it in three weeks. And so as you catch up, that's gonna make it a little bit easier. And, and also understand that if there is a time at which you've really gotta have something, call the council, or have the mayor call the council and say, look, I really need this, what can we do to expedite it? And, you know, there's all, there's always ways, for instance, when we select professional services, well, the process is selected, and the mayor goes off and negotiates. But if, when you've seen it, when we need it in a hurry, we'll say, well, we authorize the selection, and we authorize to negotiate, and we authorize not to exceed them out. So there's ways to do that.
That's what we'll be doing.
That's what you'll request to be done. Let's say that's what you'll be requesting. Okay.
I would accept that.
Okay.
So, can I finish up on my end too? So what I'd like to do is get with Richard after, since we had this conversation now with everyone, and get a game plan together from the funding side. I mean, I know there's also five hundred sixty two thousand from AMEA, there are different thing, other things available. So I wanna sit with him based on the feedback that we're getting here, and anything else he might come up with, which is kinda scary.
Well, one of the things that I'm, I'm always thinking, that money's just sitting there waiting for us to claim. And, and that's a big down payment on some of these major components we need. So if we need to get those ordered, the problem is, do we have to have the study completed before we do that?
There are ways for us to buy that equipment and have them in the bid process, it being provided by them. They're safe as tax, because the contractor will pay taxes on it. Andrew, you may have some experience with that. There are two ways that I've experienced doing it. Some are you can buy the equipment or the material and they provide it. And then there's another way for the contractor to do that and submit the paperwork, that we pay the bill actually as part of the, as part of the monthly payment for it.
To the, to the vendor.
We would probably go out on a bid for the materials and a separate bid for the contract, and that would clean that up.
And so the contractor will be doing the consulting, you know, the install by contractor providing by.
And we'd clean that up, and we wouldn't be shipping money back.
I would just hate to order something, and then the contractor, you know, I mean, the, the design engineer changed their mind and say, oh, we need a different component.
And what the difference is, is that when it's provided by us, then we've got to hopefully coordinate delivery to where it matches what the contractor needs to deliver, you know, he's got the place on the art foot. And when you don't just pick these transformers up and set them down, when you, you grab a piece of equipment. And so the coordination issue becomes, you know, a little bit more difficult on us to work that out. But I mean, we can do that, if you're wrong. That's just a bit.
Right. Sir? Yes, sir?
The, we don't, we buy it, we don't pay tax. If the contract is bid out, and the contractors, contracts are ordered to a contractor, we have to go through the state revenue department, where they fill out a couple of forms, and we fill out a couple of forms. And they submit them to the state revenue department, and the state revenue department issues a certificate saying, for this project, that contractor can buy tax free. And at the end of the project now, and this is fairly recent, a couple, last couple of years, the contractor submits that certificate back to them with the proper number. to them with the proper numbers so that the state has knowledge that they didn't take that certificate and go out and buy other things against it tax free. And we submit two and they kind of compare the two numbers. But yes, there is a way, once we bid it out, that the contractor can buy the items and install turnkey tax free.
Want to do that? Sure.
We can do that. But we, but in order to do that, we have to get the design consultant going and the design may have been, that's the draw.
All right. Well, if there's any one critical component that you know, you, you feel extremely certain, no, I'm thinking of electrical component. If there's one that you feel like is going to have the capacity that we need, it's not going to be undersized by the time they finish designing it.
We'll give the model and then we'll, we'll know a little more about it then.
And it's the most, the longest lead item.
Who are we talking about?
Yeah, I reached out in the week. It should be five.
Because when you drove me around, you know, you're like, well, we need this. There's so many kilovolt amps. We need this one.
Yeah. We'll keep it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, counsel. Jay, how about committee, committee updates? No, you had a recycling committee.
Yeah, yeah, they just came from the recycling committee right before this. They're working on a couple of things. I don't want to, they've got an announcement coming out in the next week or so that I'll let them make. I don't want to spoil it for them. But they've got a couple of things in the works and I think it's going to be helpful. It's going to be good.
Okay. Robert?
I direct board yesterday. We've got a couple of reappointments tonight on the agenda. They're trying to move forward to find out what steps need to be taken to get an idea of what the Valana master plan cost is. So I'll be looking for that. Coming through.
Okay.
For the, for the environmental advisory board, again, their top priority right now is making sure we get the clean marina language written into the lease for the harbor. And they are also going back to kind of review the last eighteen to twenty-four months to come up with additional strategic plans, things that they really want to work on and prioritize those. So that once we get that primary focus behind us, they have, they have a good list of things they'd like to work on moving forward. Library board met this past Monday and that's pretty much what we got.
Airport authority met Tuesday. I was not there. I was out of town. And I, but when I get the minutes, I'll put them in everybody's box. How about that? Industrial development board hasn't met since, since the last meeting. And that's it. Department heads, Eric?
Yes, sir.
Dan? Tom?
Yes, sir.
Andora?
Yes, sir.
Bobby?
Good morning.
Tim?
Hello, I'm here.
Chief Alec?
Yes, sir.
Ellis?
Yes, sir.
Ed?
Yes, sir.
Robert?
Real quick, just keep on the backyard of mine. I know we don't want to spend all our money on cash lines. I'm not going to go away.
Gas lines?
Cash lines.
Oh, it's in the, it's in that infrastructure plan.
Okay.
Dan McGraw?
I recently just shot up an email to Sherilee Budward that, oh, I'm sorry Sherilee, I apologize.
That's so formal.
About our, in DC, we picked up a national recognition award for the treatment of the ACA. You know, we won the state and we ran with the name Elsman, the whole national, the national recognition and win it nationally. We were recognized.
Wayne, are you back there?
Yes, sir. Nothing.
All right. Chief Patterson?
Yes, I have something. I had spoke to a couple of councilmen, I guess last week. The mayor and I went out to Walmart and looked around and we talked to the manager out there, Billy Odom. And we've been trying to find out, we're running out of space over there. And back when Walmart was built, we were promised that we would, we were told, rather, that we would have kind of like a substation out there. I'm not really looking for a substation. Some of y'all probably, when you're riding around, you might see an officer pull over to the side of the road, he's working on his notebook doing a rec or he's doing an office report or something like that. And the mayor has been getting, having me to get some numbers and stuff to see, you know, how many times we have to go to Walmart and stuff, because it's one of our biggest places. We do a lot of rec. So we went out and we were really surprised that they have a school out in Walmart. And they are teaching their employees and it's the only one in this part of the country, well, in the south down here, that teaches. And they have people come from Mississippi and all, all around locally, from Pensacola and think a little further than that. And we did a tour of, of the classrooms, met some of the students and stuff and they introduced themselves. But these students are staying here in local hotels. And they have food cards and stuff and they're shopping in our restaurants and stuff. And so we thought that was great that, you know, we got people, we didn't know that's been trained how to go to work and do things and that they have a school out there and they're spending money here in the city. And, but what I did was I talked with them. I met with the manager, well, I talked with the manager and asked him, and he said that they have rooms set up from time to time. He said he happened to have a space. And the room is about, it's just about this size room. And that he said that we met the district manager when we went out. And they said that they didn't have a problem with, we're putting a desk in and we could be out there, but we, it's not a substation. And I want to make sure everybody's clear on it, that it would just be a place where an officer can go in and do his work, kind of like what we used to do, we do at the different schools. They have offices set up to do that. I talked with Marcus and he's going to research it, but I wanted to bring it to the council. I, I believe I spoke to, I spoke to you about it and I spoke to Council McCarness about it. And so I wanted to bring it to the full council. And I did talk to Mr. Boom about it also. And to the council so that I can kind of throw it out there to see what they think about it. When Mayor Kent was here, when we bought the pecan shed, he had talked about giving us part of that down there to do a substation. And that never did really materialize. And so, anyway, Walmart has a Walmart foundation. And they work with the community. I've worked with them before on things. When we did our book back drive and, uh, book back drive, back to school drive and everything, they worked great with us. And so they, they work with the community. It helps out at different needs and causes and stuff. And so that was one of the things I wanted to bring to the council to see, so y'all could kick it around and see what you thought about it. But Marcus is going, him and Tuttis going to look into it to see if it's in a legal problem or anything like that for us. We're just in the beginning stages, talking. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Questions for Chief?
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Sherilee?
I just wanted to update the Eastern Shore repertory theater performance. Y'all were there. A lot of you were there. Was a great success. And we're looking at ways to work with them next year. We're, we're talking about some exciting ideas, which I don't want to divulge just yet, but I will, about performances up on the bluff and how we can do that in a way that's easier on our public works department too. And we're looking at issues with all events and how do we make them more streamlined. We had Girls Night Out, which was a big success too. Other than that, I was at a conference yesterday for Coastal Resilience. And there are other opportunities for us, again. There's just, there's so much technical assistance and just opportunities for grants and things for things we're already doing. So it's just a matter of plugging it all in and finding time to write all the proposals and work with, I'll work with Stacy on some of that too. But it was exciting to see that people wanted to help and work with us in partnership. So NOAA was there, the, several people from the state. There were regional people there too. And there are different programs that have not been defunded yet that might be defunded in 2018, but we still have an opportunity to apply for that I probably wouldn't have known about if I hadn't gone. So that was successful. And I spoke there too. I was on a city panel. There were cities from Texas to Florida on the panel. So I think that went, that went really well. And that's about it for now, other than the other things we just talked about. And I've talked to you individually about different things, but we don't need to get into the details of that here. But as we progress, I'll give you more updates.
Okay. Questions, Frank?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Richard?
I'm not, I've said my face.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, I'll close the department head updates and we'll move into the agenda meeting real quick. I do want to add, before I forget, the actual, it was back here in item six. It was in your package. Actually, this will be item six. Site plan review, a request of, does everybody have a copy of this? Everybody has a copy of this, right? Somebody make a motion to amend the agenda to add this item?
At the meeting.
Someone?
No, at the meeting.
No, no. In the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Make a one note here. All right. So item five will just be a public hearing. Wayne, you'll give us the rundown on that?
Yes, sir. It's the Thompson PUD, order one to PUD in the Consonia seven lots. It's been going on for quite a while.
Well, you can do that in a meeting. You can do it in a work, in the, in the council meeting.
Okay.
Just trying to line you up for that.
I thought you were going to give a brief on it, okay?
No, no. Unless anybody has any specific question, I think we should, should do that in the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item six will be the add-on, which would be the site plan review, the request of century construction. Because it was actually originally supposed to be item six. Okay, number six, we don't need to discuss now. Number seven is the same. Number eight, we've already discussed this. And anybody have any questions about number eight? Who would talk about the OPEB? Dan, that'd be you?
If it's up or it's not right.
Okay. Item nine, who's going to talk to item nine?
I'll speak in the chat.
Can I ask, Mayor, can I ask you a question about that? You know, one of the things that you've mentioned is, is, you know, are, are Eric maybe, will you, will you come forward, lady, I should ask you this at the same time. One of the things that you had mentioned and I agree with was that, you know, all these expenses that we have for city services for things just such as this, you're going to have these, whether the developer or whomever it is, pay these costs. Why in this case, you know, is it that the city's having to pay?
Well, it gets included in the fee that exceeds this, but I agree, I think if we're getting that anyway and it costs us extra, there should be a way to add one that you can help me.
Correct, yes. We have never, the building department has never historically outsourced any of our plan reviews. This is a very, we've got several projects that are going to be coming up before the end of 2017 that are going to be very large, very complicated projects. We've got some church builds. We have stuff going on at the grand. We collect a plan review fee in our ordinance based on the value of the project with everything we issue. In this case, part of the issue we have with this project is, as complicated as it is in and around everything else we're doing on a daily basis, we generally kind of picket these plans an hour here, an hour there. And it turns into a nine, ten, eleven week process to get a set of plans for them to get going, because it's just a lot to look at. Here, we're going to collect money that is in excess of what it's actually going to cost us to have the plans reviewed. And we can get them turned loose within five or six weeks. And it saves them money. It gives us a very thorough plan review. And there's going to be a few of these that, you know, between now and the end of the year that I may want to bring to you on this. But I did look at revising our ordinance and putting, we were going to talk about some fees, but putting a, a bullet in there that if a plan is sent out for a third-party review, we will either collect our plan review fee of $2.50 per thousand or the cost of the third-party review, whichever's greater. That way we are not having to come up with any money outside of what we collect for these.
Okay. Any questions, Frank? Yeah, Eric, so when you send that off to, for review, does a city still look at it or?
We will still, we'll have a set because we've got to look at it from a zoning standpoint. We've got to look at it for utilities. They've got to be able, all utility departments have to look at it. We, and I'm, I'm asking for the International Code Council to review the architectural, the handicapped accessibility portions, the electrical and the fire sprinkler. Those are the four, because they're still, we're going to have to look at it for energy code and mechanical and plumbing. We're going to do that in-house, but we're asking them to look at those four components for us because they're just very involved.
Can they, can they not look at the electrical and mechanical as well?
Well, they can, but it's, but there's a fee for each discipline you ask them to look at. Those are the four that take the most time. The most time-consuming are those four disciplines. The others, we can get done fairly quickly, but the, the architectural relates back to fire safety, firewall separation, egress, because there's a lot of people in this building and we've got to be able to make sure they're getting out and the exits are set up the way they need to be. So this will help speed this up a lot. When three circles submits their plans, I'm probably, I'm definitely going to ask to do the same thing there, because that's, that's going to be a huge project when they, when they kick off.
So basically, this is cheaper than hiring more people?
Absolutely. Yeah.
What, what really bothers you?
It really does. And I mean, yeah, because one of the questions, yes. And from a liability standpoint, you know, the International Code Council, they write the building code. They also have a plan review service with architects and engineers on staff. So if we're going to get a thorough, complete review, they are probably the most qualified service out there to do it.
Okay. Let's skip ten, self-explanatory. Eleven. It's self-explanatory. Twelve is what Dan and Robert spoke to and Jay earlier. Thirteen, self-explanatory. Fourteen, self-explanatory. Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. All right, we're adjourned until, or does anybody have anything else? Not adjourned until right before six. Anything else? Listen to her.